We call this meeting the Fairfield County Council to order Monday, January 8th, 2018 at 6:00 PM. First item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the agenda as presented in any discussion. Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Seven to zero. The agenda is approved. The invocation. Councilmember Trout, please.
Let us pray. God, thank you for allowing us to be here today. Please be with us as we conduct the business of the county and let all decisions that we make be for the betterment of the county. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Trout. Next is the approval of minutes. We have one tonight, regular meeting, December 11, 2017. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the minutes from our regular meeting, December 11, 2017, as presented in any discussion. Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Seven to zero. I think I heard everybody there, so we don't need to do it. All right. Public presentations, we have none. First, public comments session. Mrs. Davis.
We have three to speak tonight. First, Ms. Shirley Green, speaking on Mount Zion.
I'm Shirley Green, District 2, Fairfield County Councilman, administrative staff. The citizens of Fairfield County need you to say no to the town of Winsborough's offer to deed Mount Zion property to Fairfield County. As stated, the town of Winsborough will try to transfer Mount Zion's deed to you. Then you will enter memorandum of understanding with First and Main developers. After the 100 days developmental period, you will maintain possession of the property regardless of whether the developer comes up with a viable plan or not. Have you actually read the document? I invite you to read it again. Locating the county complex at Mount Zion property is wrought with challenges. The Fairfield County complex is already in the town of Winsborough, and whatever economic impact accrued is already here. The lease agreement in the memorandum of understanding with First and Main developers has upfront rental costs low at $300,000 to $325,000, with a developmental cost of $5.5 million. After five years, an estimated $1.5 million in rental payments would have been made. There's still an unspecified purchase price when the historic tax credit expires. The Mount Zion location only has one entrance for emergency personnel should a fire or police, should a train derail, or a train block the streets if there's an emergency situation involving a train. The Mount Zion property has a Confederate monument facing the main entrance of the complex on College Street. Protest on both sides of the issue have caused problems and dissensions for communities and would be a major hindrance to economic development. The acceptance of the property deed by the Fairfield County will encumber the taxpayers of Fairfield County to bear the burden of tearing down the Mount Zion buildings should the developer not come up with the plan and credits or funding not materialize. The possible remediation of mold, asbestos, and lead paint will be costly and hazardous. Blight will be left in the Mill Village area with the vacancy of the current building. You want a complex? Build one. Be transparent, the community with the community, and show the total cost benefit ratio of a new complex.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Yvette Howard, speaking on Mount Zion and transparency.
Fairfield County council members and employees, I am here this evening to speak on the matter of the Mount Zion memorandum of understanding between the Fairfield County and First and Main Development LLC and transparency. I attend county and town council meetings. Last fall, I became aware of a proposal for the Mount Zion property to be used for a Fairfield County government complex. The memorandum of understanding mentioned above was being worked on in September 2017. The town council minutes from November shows that the memorandum of understanding between Fairfield County and First and Main Development Corporation was approved by the town council. This was in November of 2017. When I and others inquired to the county about this proposal, we received an email stating that there was no such plan in the works. In fact, it stated that the town of Winsborough is working with First and Main Development Corporation to transfer the property to First and Main. However, in reading that memorandum of understanding and our clarifications from both the town and the county since then, show indeed that their memorandum is between First and Main and the county. And if the deal falls through and the Development Corporation cannot do what they are proposing, then the county will own this property. There are many concerns about this proposal. The county already has an office building. What will become of it if it is vacated and abandoned? What effect will it have on the surrounding neighborhood? What monetary cost will this be to taxpayers to take over the Mount Zion property and rehab it? The Mount Zion property has a Confederate monument at its entrance. There will be protests, as indicated. There will be an effect on the economic development in Fairfield County. And many times when I come here, that seems to be the stated number-one concern with the council right now is economic development in Fairfield County. I'm asking you to vote no on this proposed memorandum of understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on needs assessment.
Randy Bright, District 1, Ridgeway. I was pleased to note that you had the word priority next to the assessment list that you're going to discuss today. And I think all of you and everyone in this room would agree, one of our biggest town downfalls in previous council regimes was prioritizing everything, and then virtually nothing got done at great expense, and certainly not done at a correct or acceptable manner. And I would hope that, and have confidence in that this council will go ahead and proceed with priorities, and I would assume in your January strategic planning retreat, that you'll list these priorities, keep them limited to really getting bang for the buck, so we don't have so many priorities we can't manage them, and again, we have failures like the previous regime, and that you attach specifics to these priorities. As an example, recreation is listed many times in many things related to recreation and health. So, take specific SMART goals. All of you know what that acronym means. Many of you have worked with people who were organizations that strongly emphasize SMART goals. But take recreation, for example. Distill it down to the point of perhaps increasing exercise facilities available to 50% of the population as opposed to 33%. How are you going to do it? When are you going to do it? And proceed from there. Too many, too many times and too often, we have had goals and priorities that don't have specifics, don't have time, don't have measurability to it, and then we never get it done. So, take these priorities, apply SMART goals to them, get the specifics so you can follow through and follow up through the process, so then we'll actually get some priorities done instead of priorities undone. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes segment one.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. We're now down to public presentations. Oh, I'm sorry. Public hearings, there are none. Ordinances, resolutions, and orders, none. Boarding commission minutes, we have two for tonight that were sent to us. Disabilities and special needs and Fairfield Behavioral Health Services. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
No moves.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the minutes as presented from disabilities and special needs and Fairfield Behavioral Health Services, any discussion. Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven to zero. Those minutes are approved. No boarding commission appointments for tonight, no old business, new business, approval of 2018 calendar year meeting dates. We all got this in our packet. I don't know if anybody had any questions. Otherwise, we'll take a motion at this time to approve those.
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the 2018 calendar year meeting dates as presented, any discussion. Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven to zero. 2018 calendar year meeting dates approved as presented. We're now down to the county administrator's report. Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, sir. First up tonight, I'll have Mike Tanner, our Director of EMS, address council as we have been doing, giving reports on each department. He will update council on EMS, call volumes, and where we stand right now.
Good evening. Last year, we were pretty busy. We ran about 4,500 calls, and the county were up about 400 calls. Most of them were either trauma-related or medical-related, and we continue to see a trend of more people being more sick, more critically injured, because we are always in the lead of mortality, trauma mortality in the state, which, you know, we're trying to combat that with, you know, safety stuff. But we are definitely in a county that's rural, and we have a lot of bad wrecks and so on and so forth, so we try to be best prepared we can. So, what we've been doing is, we're trying to get as many homegrown people as we can because the state is facing a critical shortage of EMS workers within the state. In fact, they've created a statewide task force that we sit on. Anna Beth, my assistant director, sits on that, and they're trying to find solutions for EMS shortages in the state because it's at a critical point now that that statewide task force has been created. So, what we're trying to do to combat here in Fairfield County is, if the more homegrown people we can get, I think the better retention and recruitment we can have. And some of the things we've been doing, in fact, we just had two of our six students that just finished paramedic school, homegrown. We had Lindsay Matthews from Ridgeway that just got finished the paramedic program, and Rose Derrick from Winsborough that just got finished the paramedic program. And the more these homegrown people I see, the more, they're more out to stay, and, you know, they take care of their home county. So, what we've been trying to do is try to get more of those in. And what we're going to do to try to get that is, is we're reinstating our Explorer program. At first, we had it a long time ago, and we got, you know, a couple, but now we have full cooperation with the school system. In fact, we're not only reinstating the Explorer post, we're also started a mentoring program with the school system. And also, they have created an apprenticeship program with all the technical schools in the area, as well with Midlands Tech and Tri-County and York Tech and all that, to try to get more of these young people focused in EMS career. So, that's some of the things we're doing to try to combat that, because right now, we're at another critical shortage in EMS employees in our own service. We're down nine slots right now. And for us, that's huge because we have a huge county to cover, and when we have one or two substations down, we have a large gap in coverage, and that can increase the response times and so on and so forth. So, in fact, we have a presentation tonight that we're going to bring before the finance committee to try to help combat this even further. Do y'all have any questions about EMS and what's going on?
I'm just curious. I know y'all are busy all the time. I know, I hear you have a drone that was bought through a grant.
Yes, sir.
Would it be possible for the Sheriff's Department to be able to use this drone if they needed to search for missing, a missing person?
Yeah, as long as they have the, they have to be certified ground pilot, you know, once they get that certification.
I was going to ask.
Yeah, they have to go through the FAA to get that. It's called an OCA clearance through the FAA for public safety. And once they get that, oh, yeah, we can, we can have it at like a central location to where it can be available, because it's got infrared, you know, that we use for search and rescue, you know, when somebody's lost out of a wreck or, you know, elderly's wandered off from the house or so on and so forth. I can see all kind of applications that the Sheriff's Department can probably use for that as well.
Well, that's good. Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Goins.
Okay. Good evening. Would like to say thank you so much, and I appreciate Administrator Taylor for setting this up because I had an explanation of how EMS works and when the call goes in and that the person is not always right there. But I had my second experience with EMS on the 27th of last month, and my husband became ill, and it so happened, they came right back to the area on West Side. They just came in, they came, and I want to commend Fairfield County EMS personnel, all of them, for the professional job they did, the response. I understand sometimes they can't get there when we just pick up the phone. But I, I'm so thankful for the response, for the action, the professionalism that they showed. Thank you all so much for the job that you do.
Thanks, Ms. Goins. Yeah, because when you're on the other side of that time clock, when you call 911, 10 minutes seems like two weeks.
That's right.
Yeah, so I understand that. And most of the complaints we get, you know, is it took them so long to get there, but when I actually go, look, it only took us about 10, 15 minutes, you know, because I've been on the other side, too. It takes forever when you're on that side, so I can understand.
Thank you so much.
Any other members of council? All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Taylor.
Next item I have is the CDBG Needs Assessment Priority List. The Community Development Block Grant Program requires each year that councils look at what their community needs are and rank those, rank those needs before they can put an application into the Community Development Block Program to determine what programs they want to pursue grant monies for. The rankings should be, or the list that they have, I think councilmembers have copies of this, that you can choose from. You can put anything on the list you would like, but these are the programs that they fund. Community infrastructure is one of the programs. That's the program that has the most money in it. And infrastructure is, as it sounds, primarily water and sewer, those kind of projects. We would have to work with the towns to do that since we really don't have water and sewer. Community enrichment is another one. That is community facilities, everything from libraries to public meeting spaces, those kind of projects. Then you have neighborhood revitalization. That is going into neighborhoods and doing things to rehab houses and make the neighborhood more livable by putting lights and sidewalks and things such as that. Then they have a catch-all category called special projects. With that, you can put pretty much anything you want to in. There's not a lot of funding in that project, in that program, though, very little funding. But we do need council to rank for us amongst those categories what they feel is first and most, first most important, second and third, and fourth.
All right. We have any questions or comments on that?
Question?
Yes, Ms. Goins.
Not something that we're going to do tonight.
No, I would, I would think that we need to take some time to look over it and then come back and have that discussion.
We just need a vote on that prior to us applying for CDBG, so it's.
And I think that's, what, what did you say? Did you say, or did I read that in here, the date for that, to have that in?
Each one of these has different funding cycles, but I think we would be good for the next couple of months. Because really, the important funding cycles don't come.
I think it was March or something.
Right, until next year or end of this year at this point.
All right. Thank you very much.
The next item I have is concerning the Mount Zion property and what we're looking to do with that. I rarely read statements, but with this one, I'm just going to go ahead and read through a statement so we cover where we've been and how we've gotten to this point. "It's long been known that at some point in the near future, the county must address the need to improve and provide additional space for both the courthouse, the sheriff, and the administrative functions of the county. Before I and many of our current councilmembers were here, a number of different options were explored. None were acted on because of the cost and other factors. Since I have been here, we have again looked at the rehab of our existing administration building which we're in tonight, and have even engaged architects to look at the renovation of the old courthouse, as well as the construction possibly of a new courthouse downtown. The rehab of this existing administration building would be very expensive. An estimate prepared some years back put the cost of just a new roof and replacing all of the mechanical systems at over $2.5 million. For that, we would have no additional space, nor would we address any of the other needed improvements to this building. Our maintenance crews have told us that at any time that the heating and air system may go out, and due to its age and lack of ability to find parts, they may not be able to repair it. Currently, it may sound funny, but for the most part, it's being held together by Flex Seal. They spray a fair amount of on it each month just to keep it going. Many of our sheet rock walls have also separated due to moisture infiltration, and at times, the back staircase becomes a waterfall when it rains very hard, and that water floods directly into the Sheriff's Department. The courthouse is in much the same shape. Its mechanical systems need to be replaced, and it's experiencing water infiltration. With the courthouse, that's a little bit different situation. At any time, the court administration may require us to take immediate action to either repair or provide additional suitable space for the courts. As stated earlier, we had talked with architects, and we're in the process of exploring a new courthouse on Congress Street, then relocating much of the courthouse staff to it before beginning renovation on the existing courthouse. The cost of that project would have been $17 million. With our new reality of abandoned nuclear reactors, we simply cannot afford this. With renovation to either the administration building or courthouse, we are also looking at considerable disruption to our operations and significant costs associated with temporarily relocating staff and services while the work is done to these buildings. The idea of repurposing the Mount Zion School was proposed as the solution. Many other communities have successfully repurposed historic buildings for new uses. This is a model that has helped to revitalize their towns. In fact, in previous, in a previous study that the county had commissioned, Mount Zion was specifically identified as a catalyst project that should be focused on for redevelopment. The consultants felt that should Mount Zion be redeveloped, it would have a great impact on improving the community and spurring new growth. To explore this possibility, we began working with First and Main Development, a company that specializes in historic renovation and reuse. As a private company, they have a successful track record of using historic tax credits to affordably redevelop old buildings. With their expertise and taking advantage of the tax credits, they could do the building by far cheaper than we could and much quicker. The lease agreement would allow us to get the space we need in a timely manner and at a price that would not burden our budget. Or, especially, if we had to put out a large outlay of money upfront, it would preclude our ability to pursue other important economic development and community projects. I do not think we're in a position to borrow more money, nor do I want to deplete our reserves in order to do the necessary renovations needed. In fact, I hope to be able to consolidate some operations such as magistrate's court and planning into one building, allowing us to save on the buildings that they are in. We have talked with the town of Winsborough, who currently owns the building, and they feel that renovating the building for county use would be a very positive, would be very positive, and to that end, they have voted to give the building to First and Main for the purpose of redeveloping it for the county's use. As a party to the contract, I would need council to approve me to sign the deed on the county's behalf. Based on previous discussions at county council meetings, I'm also, and we are also, very sensitive to the concerns surrounding the Confederate monument that sits near Mount Zion. We have asked the town, and they have agreed, that it could be moved away as part of this process. It would be removed from the site.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I've got, you know, we had discussed this a little bit before the meeting, and I know that we have the folks from First and Main here tonight, and we'll have an executive session discussion with them on things that are part and parcel to the MOU and deed itself in terms of contractual matters. But I wanted to ask some questions, just so we have some discussion in public tonight for the benefit of folks who are interested in this, and just a few questions that I had. And one is, well, first of all, let me preface that by saying that what you're asking us to do is only to allow you to assign, to sign to a deed that would say, if this project does not materialize, that the county would accept the property from the town or from the developer which would own it at that point. That's the only thing you're asking us. You're not asking us to approve doing anything with the project tonight. You're not asking us for any money tonight. You're not asking us for anything part and parcel to really the building itself, or the monument, or any other secondary things that may be concerned with this. So, I want to make that clear and preface these questions. But I did have a few, and just wanted to ask, have you looked into, or do we know if we did have to accept the building? And my first thought would be that if, for whatever reason, the project is not successful and it does not materialize, that we would demolish it. I mean, we've gone through numerous, in Fairfield County and in the town, proposed projects with Mount Zion. Thus far, none of them have worked. I am hopeful that this one will, but if it doesn't, we have to have a plan in place. And I want to know if we, if we are aware of what the demolition of that facility may cost if it does not work out.
And the previous estimates that the town has received were roughly $200,000. So, that would be the cost. That would be what our exposure could be, should the project not move forward.
Okay. And have you talked with the town at all about their willingness to work with us and cost share on the demolition? I know they were planning to do that anyway, they would have borne that cost solely themselves and.
We did have some discussions concerning that. I think they have indicated that they have used most of the money they had on legal and other matters concerning the building, so they, they did not feel they had much money they could contribute. We can have those discussions again.
Okay. I know I've talked with a couple individual members of council. I just didn't know in your conversations with the town manager or things of that nature.
The reason if, if they have it, and they have to tear it down, they have to bear the full cost, so it would be nice.
Well, I will say, the couple councilmembers that I talked to, and I spoke to two today, they were absolutely, absolutely willing to look at cost sharing on that for us.
One time, they also, they said that they would give us a billion and a hundred thousand and a half.
That was the initial discussions, yes.
Yep. And then, you know, we also talked about, or you talked about, the usable space in the facility and what it would cost to, you know, do something with the facility that we're in now. Do we know how much additional square footage if we went forward with the Mount Zion project? And again, I know that's not the question tonight, but just looking ahead a little bit, how much more space that would give us over what we have now if we were to do a renovation here versus at that facility?
We have looked at that. It's 10,000 additional square foot we would, we would get. This is roughly a 20,000 square foot building. That was roughly.
And then, I think you already mentioned it about the prospect of moving the monument or the monuments that are out front. If it was a linchpin in getting this deal done, did you get a chance to speak with the town about any of the mechanics behind that and?
I've asked our attorney to draw up a document. Basically, should I sign the deed, they would also sign the document at the same time saying that the monument could be moved.
Okay. All right. I think that's the only questions I have for now. I may have some more once we get out of executive session for open session, and maybe we'll be able to do a vote at that time. Do any other councilmembers have questions that, yes, Mr. Trout?
You said that the monument could be moved, but will it be moved?
It would be moved. It would be, as a condition of us moving forward with the project, it would be moved.
Also, as far as the cost sharing, do you have a document as well for that to get a dollar figure from them?
That's something we, we would have to develop and get a commitment from the town on.
Will we get that also before we sign on any document?
We can make that contingent. We could.
Ms. Goins, you had a question, I think?
Yes, on the monument being moved, would we incur any cost from that?
We may. I'm certain if we're the ones making the request, we would probably have to incur some cost in doing it.
Okay. And also, on the demolition of the building, if we have to receive that, is there any other avenues that we can seek to help with that cost? Is anything else out there?
Again, back to CDBG, that's something you can apply for that, and the town had looked at that at one point, and it, you can do blight removal with CDBG. If you have something that you can argue that if you remove it in the end, if it's not savable, if you can't do something to reuse it, you can get money for that to do that.
I would just add to that as well, just, just to point out, I mean, even if we have to demolish it, the property that it's on would, would still be the county's at that point, so it wouldn't go back to the town after that. We would still have that property.
It's a property that's already graded flat and has utilities, so.
Mr. Roof?
If, if it were to come to pass, I would be for moving the monuments, too, but is there, or is there a statute that it would have to be approved by Congress? I mean, do we, do, can, aren't there some stipulations?
There are some state laws, and I would refer to our attorney to advise us on that if he would. But again, that's not the original location. I think we can make quite the argument that it would be suitable to move that monument. That's not its even original location.
And I'll defer to, to our county attorney on this, but would also state that I've looked in depth at the state law, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Morgan, but the law, first of all, has no penalty whatsoever. It says that a public body, if, if there's any monument, it doesn't matter, we're talking in particular about a Confederate monument, but it could be anything, any monument in the state of South Carolina, if it's on public property, that the public body cannot move it. It does not speak in any way to private property. So, if, for instance, that portion of the property were transferred to the developer or a third party that was a private entity, I think they would certainly be within the right to move it, because that law only pertains to public property and public bodies, not private property and private entities. So, I think that may be an avenue as well. But, Mr. Morgan, do you have anything to add?
Mr. Chairman, I think at this point in time, I think that's an accurate statement. I would ask, before I can give a full wheel opinion, if you're around any of the opportunity to do some further research into that, but based upon my first-person glance as well, God, I haven't told you that certain things, for example, the race, I think that is an accurate statement.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for right now?
But based upon my first thought stance as well, without having helped me, that's the thing that I would be able to make a better example of that as an accurate statement.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for right now? All right. Mr. Taylor, you have anything else?
No, that's all I had tonight.
All right. We have nothing under the clerk to council's report. Second public comment session. Mrs. Davis.
We have one speaker, Mr. Randy Bright, to speak on tax analysis.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway. Aside from utilizing the needs assessment analysis to, besides going for grants, to also use it as a priority list for your beginning of the year planning, I would also like to recommend that we do a repeat of the tax and service analysis that we did a couple years ago. To my understanding, it was for free from the University of South Carolina. Maybe Jason can reach out to the business department who did it previously and get, get this analysis. The analysis now is two or three years old. I, I thought it was a really good eye-opening analysis. It compared our county expenditures, taxes, and services with like rural counties. And some interesting facts, we spent twice as much per capita than the average rural county from our general fund, and some other interesting things. We did, we do have more services from this report, and, and there was, it was a mix, it was a mixed bag. It wasn't all bad, it wasn't all good. But we didn't do anything with it, of course. And I'm not blaming anybody here, but we didn't do anything with it. It was really an eye-opening report, and we got it for free. So maybe this is something that council and Jason could approach the University of South Carolina. I'm not saying we should pay for one. I mean, we've got enough plans on the shelf that we've paid for that we could maybe bury Mount Zion with. But anyway, at the very least, get the same deal we got before, which was for free analysis, and it really gives you some eye-opening things about the county and where we can make improvements and maybe where we can't make improvements. But, but one example, it showed us with nearly twice as many employees as, as a typical rural county. But there's some reasons for that, and this, this explained it. So let's just try to get this and incorporate this along with the priorities from, from the needs assessment to move our county forward with as much information. And be sure that if we get this analysis, that we actually analyze it, make some decisions so we can move the county forward and do it in a SMART goal format so that we can get specific things done and move the county forward. Thank you. And by the way, it's on the front page of the county website.
Thank you.
That concludes segment two.
All right. We're now down to county council time. Any council members have anything? Mr. Douglas.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the volunteer fire department for the excellent job they did putting out an apartment fire at Lampletter Apartments in 1C. They stayed and would not leave until the fire was completely out. And doing a thorough job as they did, three other apartments in the building were saved and the tenants escaped unharmed with their direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Goins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, I'm just going to read this and to kind of give an explanation, this is something for consideration for Western Fairfield. This is from R.J. Young Enterprises, and it says, "Facility uses opportunity located at 12540 State Highway 213," which is known in the community as Old, as Mel's Plaza formerly. But it says, "It was a joy speaking with you about all the things that Fairfield County Council is doing to enhance the quality of life for the residents of our great county. As a former council member representing District Four, I am keenly aware of the time and dedication that you and the remainder of council devote to assessing and meeting the needs of the entire community. As the council and administrator embark upon setting priorities for fiscal year 2018, 2019, please consider a facility owned by me in Jenkinsville, South Carolina, District Four, that presents an opportunity to meet the needs of the county. The facility location is at 12540 State Highway 213, Jenkinsville. And close for your visual examination is an architectural rendering that depicts a vision of the facility, which is near Lake Monticello and the VC Summers Nuclear Station on the western side of Fairfield County. My immediate desire is to confer with the appropriate representatives to determine whether the county has an interest in exploring the use of this facility in a manner that serves the public interest. I look forward to hearing from you and our the opportunity, appropriate representative from the county, to discuss this opportunity. Happy New Year, Remell J. Young." And I spoke with him, and as I say, this building, he is not at this time interested actually maybe in selling it, but working collaboratively with council, with the county, to use it for a public facility and even the cost, all of those things, he's willing to work with us on. So this is something about council to take into consideration in the future, as well as our administrator, independent administrator.
Thank you, Ms. Goins. Anyone else? All right. If not, we will, before we get too far, I'll just say, roll tide. But, but we'll take a motion to go into executive session to discuss four items tonight. Item A is a legal matter, update on litigation against SCANA, S-C-E-N-G, in reference to the abandoned VC Summers nuclear project. B is a personnel matter, receive information regarding an investigation of an employee complaint pursuant to SC code annotated 30-4-70A1. Personnel matter, receive information regarding investigation into personnel records pursuant